Patriots.
Yep, Mayor Roger Perry.
Yeah.
Council President Adine Oliveris.
Present.
Councillor Jeff Hensley.
There.
Councillor Ray Jackman.
Here.
Councillor Brian Lewis. We have a quorum, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a motion to pay the bill.
Do we want to do visitors?
Oh, yes, visitors. Okay, sorry. Okay, visitors, please state your name so we can get on record.
Me, sure. Amy Lewis.
Mike Miller.
Tim Barkey.
He's the person.
Joseph Porson.
Tina Brercher.
One more.
State your name.
Peter Nelson.
I'm people in the middle church. Okay. You're supposed to pay the bills.
Make the most of it to pay the bills.
I'll turn on that.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Ray has to abstain.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay, so.
He didn't. He didn't say anything.
I didn't say anything.
There we go.
And motion carries. Okay, I've got a motion in second minutes for last meeting. Second second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we're gonna square it then.
Yeah.
We're gonna go on down.
We got that, so.
Okay.
Do I have to move?
Yes. So, we have a couple of. Thanks for recognizing our Councillors for their service. Eric Perry, thank you. So.
Let me sort of.
I want to say a word. These two gentlemen have really done a lot for the city to keep us going in really hard time to give us a wealth of information and to give up themselves an extra time. And I just, as hopefully as it is, I would like to get them a phone.
I mean, this is nothing you get paid for. You spend a lot of time doing it and it's very appreciable.
I'll still be here, so.
And not get rid of you yet.
Hi, Brian Lewis.
Hi, Brian Lewis. Do solemnly swear or affirm, which I solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, the United States of America, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, the Constitution of the State of Oregon, the Charter of the City of Soudo, the Charter of the City of Soudo, the laws enacted there under. Acted there under, and I will faithfully perform, and I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor, the duties of mayor, to which I have been, which I have been.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Roger Perry.
Hi, Roger Perry. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution, that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America, because two shots of Oregon.
Swearing.
Go, you want, you make kind of a choice.
Please don't do a wrong.
Do solemnly swear or affirm. Do solemnly swear. And I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
The United States of America, the United States of America. The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon.
The Charter of the City of Soudo.
The Charter of the City of Soudo.
The laws enacted there.
And the laws there enacted under.
And I will faithfully perform.
And I'll faithfully perform.
The duties of councillor.
The duties of councillor.
Which I have been.
Which I have been.
You said.
Say yours.
I'm doing one there, so you go. It looks, I'm surprised. Ten inches.
Yeah. I have to.
There's all the bodies. It's a good one. Yeah. It's all true and red. No, because the term is four years. So no squaring.
And I came along at the same time, so.
Yeah. Congratulations on you.
It was, well, you know, big work. Right, when you think everything is order.
Mr. Mayor, can we congratulate everybody? Yeah. Congratulations, everybody.
What a privilege to eat it. Maybe that will make shut the door.
It's nice. We have public comment. This is the time to speak to the City Councillor and Mayor on any subject, including what is listed upon the agenda except for public hearings. Time limit is three minutes per person.
I'm Tina Brercher, and I'm basically the director for Habitat for Humanity in Lebanon, and we are building a home up on the bridge, the very end of the bridge. And so I just wanted to come down and introduce myself. Welcome to the new mayor. And just let you know that, you know, we're here to support you guys. And if there's any questions with anything, this is my, one of my board vice president, David, and then my project manager, Mike Miller, who works with that, with our construction foreman that's up top. And CSCU has built this up. There are some kiddos we have up there that are doing some training and learning how to build homes. So we own that piece of property. And then the city had also gifted us the piece of property that's right behind the charter school. And hopefully, I say in the less than a year or so, we should be starting some, something down there if we can get some things taken care of. And I think I talked to Alex about some of that stuff. So. But we just wanted to come and introduce ourselves and let you know that we were here. And if there's any questions about anything, to give us a call or to meet with us, then we'll be.
I have two questions. I'm always a question asker.
You're good.
Are you, when do you expect this property to be inhabitable? And do you guys already know who gets it for?
Yes, we have a family, the McMahons, and they have two children, a teenage son that's thirteen and one that is four. And they, they're coming from Sweet Home, just the outskirts of Sweet Home. So our geographic service area is Lebanon to Sweet Home and Brownsville. I serve all of Eastland County is where I build homes at. And so we do, we picked the family in October. And they're, they have, we have certain parameters that they have to fall within. And then we're hoping the house will be finished by the end of June, but we're not sure. We've run into some issues. We're still pushing for that June date, but we're not sure if that's gonna happen or not. Awesome.
So people get a drink rocket there sometimes.
Yes, but that's good. I mean, it's fine. It's, it lays us a good foundation to be able to, the one I'm worried about is the one to St. Louis. It's a little watery down there. So, because we traded you guys the mountainside over here for, I think Judy, the council at the time.
I just want to kind of push the same, the old store buildings. I want to speak. It's been as long as I live, and you guys have talked about having to turn down, put a house in there.
I didn't either. I think. Two thousand and four or two thousand and seven, and I've been the ED for almost seven years. And I was very disappointed when my current board at that time wanted to destroy that building. I'm like, no.
A previous mayor and stuff used to want it. See the mission of wanting to destroy it, but I, I put it, I took it out as long as I could also.
Yeah, we were happy to get rid of all of the other structures that were not good there. And we did, I really didn't want that one to go bye bye. I'm all about history and preserving that history, so.
I've been here over those fifty years, and that's been, since it's been, it's been a space solid, is it?
It's very solid inside. It would be wonderful to be able to see it re, redone so that it could be a museum or some, something to that. Well, give us a call. We help with all kinds of stuff, so let us know.
We might let you know.
We got lots of volunteers that like to work on that kind of stuff. And that's what we do. We help in our communities. So by all means, let us know, because we have lots of volunteers and different things that we work with to do stuff.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome to the community.
Thank you for my, my brand new for, we need a fence. We need bodies.
Okay, yeah, let us, let us know. Reach out to Mike. We can leave our business cards. I think Alex has, knows everything about Mike and myself. So let him know, and he can definitely reach out to us, and we'd be more than happy to help in the community, because you're part of our community, so.
Right.
Okay.
Real quick, I just, David, I'm so, I'm vice president, also a contractor. I cannot express what I truly believe as our mission and importance behind it. And so we truly appreciate the help and everything that you guys have given us so far. We truly look forward to this entire area of work built on that to create affordable housing for families in a way that doesn't condense them into a tiny little brick with about fifty other people. You know, we truly believe in housing, not apartments, not, you know, maybe.
Living, living not exist.
Yes. And so, so our mission isn't to build, to, to, we're not out there trying to make a bunch of money. It's not, we're nonprofit for a reason, right? So, but we can't do it without you guys. So again, I just wanted to personally thank you guys for everything. Congratulations.
Is there any kind of like a grand opening or something that we can come and support when the house is ready?
We will do a dedication. There's a home dedication that we do do. We'll do that when we hand the keys over to the family. Nice big old spread of food and have community members and people come. Yes, and please come visit and talk to our foremen up there, and just come up and see what they're doing. And because we love to involve the community. You want to volunteer, just let Mike know, and, you know, you never know what you want.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I may.
You guys let us know if we can do anything. I sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
We appreciate what you guys do.
I want to say the Habitat Crew has been really good about communication. You are really quick to answer the phone. Also, you are perfect partners for the city. Thank you so much for.
We, we enjoy, I enjoyed working with you on things, city ordinances and different things that we've had to deal with.
Yeah.
With some stuff. And I appreciate the communication as well, because I did get a lot of that with the previous and some problems. So I appreciate what you're doing, Alex.
Totally.
Immensely.
Yeah.
And JD, JD, you, yes, you too.
Is there any other comments? Yeah. Nothing? The comments on the.
That's it. Well, we had a pretty good day out here with the county sheriff. He said over here by the old store, he caught probably between twelve to fifteen cars eating.
Oh, yeah.
As they're laughing. They're annoyed about how we got tied.
Look like that?
Did you write it? Yes.
Well, we do write tickets. Good. Was it during the school hours?
So it was between one and two.
Right.
Before they let out, a little bit during they let out.
My question is, is if there, if they've stopped them and give them a ticket, does that mean that they're actually going to be out here more? That's the question I would like answered.
On that, we had a meeting, and we talked about all the signage in town. You remember last time that we talked, that we would want more signage? They legally can't do any more signage than what we have. And so they're going to. Call this was meaningful.
Joe, that idea that you had of buying those signs and putting them on your property, was that you?
Legally, you can't do that.
What?
You can't. They've got a, and it's called sign pollution.
Oh, darn.
You can't sign more signs than what the law says.
On my.
Signs are awesome. It keeps out the same way.
That's an election.
So gone. This is the street, not a racetrack.
If it's on your property, it would be on the roadway, but if it's on your property.
I could have bought my old cats, can't I?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to recommend the council vote to suspend the agenda and open item ten B, city audit. Our city auditor is here to present. Otherwise, we're gonna have a lot of stuff to do. And I just think it would be courteous to let him present first. So there will have to be a motion to suspend and open that item.
I make a motion that we suspend and open item number ten B, is that we said?
Yep, ten. Ten, uh, ten B.
Ten B to give the auditor the opportunity to address the form.
Okay, so my name is Peter Nelson. I've been a few years now. And talking about it, there's been a lot of transition in the past few years, which is partly why we're in January, which is still trying to finish up. There's just. A lot of. Recording of transactions in different ways throughout the year under audits. We're doing the audit from July one to June thirty of twenty two. So there's a lot of transactions that we had to really figure out where they should be, just because of multiple people's booking. That's why it's relatively, it's not anyone's fault, it's a reality of the situation. And so overall, I, I think it was perfectly honest. There are a couple of small points, some of which you always have. The segregation duties and the fact that we have to write three fourths, those two items, it's just the reality of a small city. That you don't have enough steady staff to, I have really strong segregation duties. You're always gonna have one person that does the majority of the transaction activity. The fact that the council is reviewing everything is very important, the city of the size, and it's the only reason the risk related to segregation of duties is low. If that was not happening, we could be a significant issues. So I just wanted to everyone to be aware of that and just doing what you're doing, you know, reviewing every transaction that you can, that I keep payroll and revenues and, and expense. So the other couple of issues that we found are, are related really to. The transition. So there's some cool tables in the transaction and figuring out how to really report, helps set up these for JD, Alex, make sure those numbers are accurate. We use the QuickBooks numbers. I'm not quite sure that's truly what it should be. So it would be worth, I don't know, that, that process of application, it's so forth, making sure you're really recording that and accurate that.
Are you saying that's not being done now? You couldn't find that, or what?
So, so there was a number in QuickBooks as of six thirty, but given the amount of people, of time people are working and when they started, I'm not quite sure that number is accurate. Just because JD and Alex started not for, for a year, based on your policy that we have a record as a plan for team, which is the last one we know of. It, it doesn't seem like it's an accurate number. So. We can go into more detail. You know, it, it's just purely an hour number, and then we have to multiply it, you know, and so forth. So. It would be worth kind of reviewing that policy on vacation and making sure just for next year that you have the hours added. That makes sense.
Yeah, I thought we already went through and discussed that. I thought we were already on track to that, but it sounds like that's still a gap.
I, I think it's a little bit of a gap. I think it's, you, you switched to having someone else do your payroll, which I think is a good move. And it's just making sure that when she's recording that payroll. It's, it's completely accurate. And so I think there is probably still a tiny gap just reviewing payroll. And making sure.
And after we met that time, we started with Alex noting his times and JD, what, what days they're working and hours and stuff.
So, so maybe that you resolved this. I mean, this was.
I think there's still improvement.
This was seven months ago, in real time, so. So that's one little thing. And then the other small issue, what you have with over expenditure related to spending you had to do for drinking water. So it's, you know, ideally you would monitor that and adjustment if you budget. So you don't actually technically have lower expenditure, but I know water situation, that's very hard to do. So it's, it's a minor, a technical violation, but not something I'm really worried about.
It's been difficult, the transition between the whole administration and administration, to try to figure that out.
So much last year's, the one ending June twenty one was very difficult. We didn't finish it until June of twenty two. So that was really the one that was. Problematic on what numbers were going better. This last year, I think Alex and the bookkeeping that's been done has really cleaned up the numbers and, and the process. And so it's not, I apologize, I'm still. But I think it's, it's definitely improving. It's not a hundred percent better, but it's definitely, there's a lot of improvement that I've seen. And you can see it in the, in the financials. If you look, you know, July twenty one and to June of twenty two, that's as you start to move through the calendar year, you can see improvement in just the recording of things. You know, and the record.
And I think the way that the accounts are changed and different and a little more streamlined, I think will help too.
Yeah, yeah. So I do, I want to mention one thing about your budget for the twenty two, twenty three year. You got rid of all your funds. And we, we talked about that back when we met. But I'm a little concerned about what happens with your old funds. So there's money in your water fund, and you never moved it out back to the general fund. And though, and I'm not sure how you're gonna handle. Prior day time, which is what you want. It's a business fund, your water fund, business fund, and how to move it to general fund activity. So I'm not, I'm sure that's right. So you may want to revisit that. And these creative water funds, I can, just to be a clear structure of. And I should have brought that up when we talked, I just, it's through all the scenarios. But when you have a business fund, which is what water is, you, you sub, you, you record things slightly differently at a different level, and you treat it like it's just any other business. Though it can be hard with actual general fund, which is.
You're saying we're staying on. Most of our money going in the general fund that we can disperse to the, the water fund?
So the, the way the water fund works is all the water fees, the writing of the water fund, and then the expenses related to providing that service are expense in water fund.
Okay.
So it's all related with water fund. Previously, you had three funds. You had the general fund, the street fund and the water fund. The street fund. I can see both sides of that. It is a governmental fund, but the money you get from the state for transportation costs is restricted. It has to be used for street with. Double activity. So that's why a fund was created for the street. You could do it in the general fund, but then you have to make sure that all the money that's coming from state is treated as restricted. So you have to make sure it's listed that way. That's why most of the time people create a street fund is just for that straight, restricted portion. But that's complicated. So I can understand why you might, you general fund. It just will give you, it causes more overhead, make sure that money is being straight, but just on.
Your recommendation is to have three funds, the general, the street and the water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that it's a good reason why we wanted to go that direction. As far as your recommendation.
Strictly. I think it's probably better. It's an easier way to track those three different types of activities. But I can definitely see, especially with the general and street, reasons not to do it. So I'm a little less interested.
Still needs to be open for discussion, it sounds like.
That's something I will start working on as I plan the next budget, is figuring that out. Part of the, the problem with historical budgets is that all those, there were a lot of just numbers that I can only describe as fictitious in there. I.
Believe me. For several years back to figure about.
So maybe next year, we can have a clean start. We simplify that and make it easier for everybody to track.
So anyways, because of the way your budget is for this year, it's under your concentrated audit next year. I'm not quite sure how.
You love you guys.
Yeah. So is there anything in the first part of the budget, you know, the first portion? Because like I said, that was under a transitional period. Is there anything that you felt was? you felt was kind of out of the ordinary?
In terms of actual transactions that we talked about. I didn't see a lot. I do, I mean, there was a few things, some taxes recorded in strange spots, it's really the biggest thing. So we had to kind of, we we expensed some taxes to show up every quarter. And we had to find on the LGI can really find out where it was. But everything was there, it just was not in where it was. You know, and I know you've been concerned somewhat about permits and that kind of activity. We did not see anything that was significant, but I have to admit permits in terms of your city budget is is a pretty small dollar amount. So it's not something that has a lot. We did some testing to see if the controls are in place, but the dollar amount means it's not something that we look at. So the firm has been doing it for years and years and years. So I started with the firm in twenty fifteen. And so I slowly shifted and so now I'm kind of the partner that does all the audits. So it's pretty much year round that I'm doing audits. I mean, I do a lot of tax work this time of year. So that's just the reality of my job. So I don't know if people have questions on the actual financials. It it seems like it's really similar to previous years.
Like said, and so is the audit complete? Is that what you're saying for twenty twenty two?
So what happens if we go until next month? So we can attempt to get a new extension. Previously, we get extension all the time. Ever since we have a new person at the Secretary of State's office, you have to have just cause, what just cause means I don't really know. So we kind of negotiate and try to get some extension. Whether that would actually happen, I don't know, just. So so our extension is through the end of January.
So we possibly have a a meeting, a special meeting or something like that, or a tele meeting on this to approve it, if everyone gets a chance to read all the stuff down.
Yeah, so we want to set that next Thursday, next Thursday?
We need to review something, we should, people should have a chance to review it.
I mean, is there anything that you can think of that means, like I say, I mean.
He's already had extensions out.
I was gonna say, is it more, do you really think that we need to focus our attention through this this report? This is the, this is the full report, right? So, I mean, I always look at. So page fourteen and and sixteen. I I always kind of look at the general numbers and you can see you know, that as a profit loss kind of statement on page sixteen for the general. And I mean, you have a a profit and you always want it as a city, you don't necessarily always need a profit. But you need to have something that's reasonable, you not having hemorrhaging cash for years and years. So I always look at the ending fund balance, so you have the general and street, then later you have the water funding. And so as long as those are sufficient to for your future work. I think that's really the key. There are pages and pages of notes. Most of it is required by governmental accounting standards and they keep adding things. So it's not something I would necessarily feel like reading every single note.
It makes one's eyes cross.
Really, the budget actual except the end report, those should match exactly what you're saying on the monthly basis. And then these kind of overall reports could kind of give you a sense of the of the city's management position. But there aren't, there is no, like, I can't say that's a big question on that, people can see exactly what.
That's what I was kind of referring to, because I haven't read through all of it, but you know, kind of reached through it and you know, it's definitely written in legal terms, so. You know, I mean, trying to decipher as to exactly what then thou shall be, right?
But yeah, so I would, you know, the areas that we've kind of already touched on, same absences. You know, the crew liability kinds of issues.
I I think delaying it would be more for you, since you're new, if you felt like it. Because the rest of us have read this already and have been heard of it. But I want to honor you. If that's something that you would like us to have a week to wait through this.
Don't know what I would find, because I'm not a. I mean, the budget is budget, the audit is audit, you said you didn't have anything blurring that.
It's not that I would like to make a motion to.
Peter and his team have been excellent to work with, so thank you so much for all your help.
We appreciate you making this current out here.
Of course, you know, and I'm always available for anyone in the community with your questions. I mean, this becomes a part of the record, so I mean, when I look at it.
Might give me a call, been on budget committee a couple of times and just to educate myself on things.
Talked about how there was trainings available, there were classes coming up and she was supposed to get back to us with a date and never did. Is that, is her train still available?
Someone have to look, so typically those budget. Trainings occur in January and February, they should be clearing right now, I'll look.
That's right, you never get educated.
So and those are free and they're just around the state.
Oh, they've finally been posted online, so the next one's on February seventh. They'll have two in February and three in March, so I will just go ahead and email that to everybody. All right. Oh, thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I will get, I will get everything signed tomorrow.
Be careful.
Don't bring him to some.
Sometimes I have to see how things are going.
I've got the foundation, we don't have any of those, you know, faster as we go along, so.
All right, so the finance reports were included in the packet as always, and anybody have any questions? We were able to get the the mountain schedule synced up with our meetings this time, the last two months, there just happened to be like a scheduling quirk, where she just wasn't able to get the reconciliation done quite in time, but we were able to sync it up correctly, so reconciliation reports were included. Now is that? Let's see. So I've had a couple of meetings with our new mayor and Commissioner Will Tucker over at Lynn County, he's actually come here. And we've made some progress on a few things. So first off, all the property tax, the back taxes are taken care of. Yep, Lynn County took care of it. He took it to commissioners, the commissioners decided to pay it for us, so it's all closed out. We're good, free and clear. Way to go. We did it. And then last week, we had a meeting with Commissioner Tucker again and then the county roadmaster. I noted in my report that we were going to have it because our report was written before the meeting was scheduled. So we talked about road signs, of course, the modern miracle of sign collusion, that was very interesting to learn about. There is a possibility we can put like a slow, you know, children in the park sign right next to that, but that's about all that they can do without incurring a massive amount of civil liability that will break everybody, so we don't want to do that. Was it? Yeah, so there are a couple of things they can do to help us with Speed Patrol. We had the sheriff deputy sitting out there today. And like they said, he got a bunch of people. They do have a trailer where they can like monitor where people come into town and get some data about that and then you get a better job of like issuing tickets and things and they say they usually like to do that in once a year in certain places and doing that will kind of like, it kind of gets people, oh yeah, can can we can't drive super fast through sort of bill, so let's let's not do that. We had a few other things with them. I was like, so we went with them, it was like, so you've done stuff for us, what can we do for the county in general, you know, a few things. One was that the council of governments is trying to build up the childcare presence in the community, because Lynn County has a really big childcare gap. State law does allow like very small childcare operations to happen like in home. So like if there's like a certain number of kids, it's like less than ten or something like that, you can operate a childcare center without, you know, the the rigor of doing something much bigger. And there are a couple of workshops coming up next week, so I sent everybody in town that is on our emailing list. A schedule of, you know, you can attend these workshops and learn how to start a small in-home childcare practice. That's a big one. We also talked about some of the kind of emergency problems we we could potentially face, given where we are. If a cas- 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 deduction event would like destroy the dams up in Sweet Home and that would cover like, so I think Lebanon and up to like twenty feet of water, depending on where it is. And then he said, if that happens, he's coming to sort of bill. Because this is the only place that's going to be out of the floodplain. Yeah. Yeah, he he talked about, you know, the the potential of wild wildfire as well, it could be pretty bad, I think that we don't really survive in that scenario, but I I think it kind of draws home the the need to get the community center building built, so it can just be a building there just being used. Exactly, so that gives us more more flexibility as we kind of find money to get that thing we have. Because we need to, we need to do something with it, we need to do something with it. So I go to the city managers meeting for the area once a month that's organized by the council of governments and I really drove from the need to like do some advocacy legislatively in the capital. And the the executive director said that's, that really does fall within kind of what they want in the strategic plan, they want to be out about, you know, jointly advocating for the community more in Salem. So I'm going to help them kind of prepare, here's how you would do it. A brief on how to have the local governance together lobby in Salem for us, so. That would be good. That'll be something hopefully we get done, you know, at the end of the year and then in the twenty twenty session, it's only thirty days, so we can have a kind of a practice run for, here's how we should go and help each other out in that building. The League of Oregon Cities has its Lobby Day next Wednesday, so I wanted to see if anybody wanted to come to that. It's gonna be all day. Yeah, and you could go for, you know, like there's a, usually like a rally at the beginning and then there'll be meetings throughout the day with local legislators, so I can send you the schedule if you want and you can let me know if there's a part of it you want to attend. Okay, yeah, I'll follow up if you want that. Last one, like I said, I have some potentially positive personal developments. I bought a house today. And I guess there's a good chance my fiancee might get married within the next month or so, so I still have the other half of my vacation time to use by the end of February. So I wanted some flexibility from the council to be able to kind of use that as needed to take care of some of these things. Of course, I I make sure I don't just leave suddenly, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. To just make sure I'm taking care of business and getting things all settled in, so congratulations. Oh, thank you. And you can, you know, if you need me to pick up the checks, definitely. Mark Twain said no means property is safe when the legislature's in session, this schedule is not safe. So we'd probably get married now, like in the summer, because I have been working fifty to sixty hours a week. Between my three different jobs. Yeah, so that's all for me. Any questions? Thank you.
The wells have been recovering, we stopped pouring water the last day of December. And last weekend, the wells actually got to reservoir. You have water restrictions? Enablement for enacting water restrictions and releasing them? Because I need to do it, I can't wait for a reach for you guys to vote on it and say yes or no. You've kind of hired me and trusted me to run that kind of thing. But I don't, I think I should just have the authority to say that.
First thing early is that there is a city ordinance that says you have to have a resolution about this, so we had a resolution enacted water restrictions and now we're going to have a resolution to end them. But we can amend that ordinance to allow in the future our public works to, oh yeah, we need to kill it.
The thing that goes along with that is higher water rates, right? Goes along with that is higher water rates, right? So that's a decision that these things make.
Well, yeah, that was what why higher water rates? Yeah, so.
Restrictions. Different classification for water bill.
Yeah, so my. My my idea there would be allow the public works director to declare a period of water restriction and follow that up with a council resolution verifying, yeah, he made the recall. We can do one restriction.
I think that's. Wasn't a way, I guess, what you just said, like to enact water restriction for going good. And the rates will be about joining the reservation of the council.
That makes it a little tricky.
Well, we went into water restrictions every September. Yeah, the year before was.
Yeah, well, yeah, but they definitely.
Suppose water restrictions get enacted, so my work and staff. One of those elevated costs associated with it.
Three years and wait three, possibly four weeks after we run into trouble to.
And it's commonly well known that when water restrictions, the rates go up. So I think that's a, if you've been in a community and experienced it, you know it. So if I don't want to wait for a week.
What you want to do is let me that water rate or whatever. When things go wrong, three weeks, that thing will be.
Yes.
So I think if I have to think on the need to involve the JD, the white inmate that the city can learn and the council meeting. But it's not usually called the council, like you always notify the council that's on.
Yeah.
Always put a letter with all the people, search the unit, get out of there.
Wait three weeks.
We didn't put on the tag, door tags, we put the door tag around. Yes, and it was put right on there. When our restrictions, rates are raised. And everyone is having to use the door tag on the doors and like there's.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's that's why I think the happy medium is to have the ordinance saying the public works director has discretion to enact water restrictions and then have the council at the next meeting bond with and verify, yes, we're good with this.
Yeah. I think that's good as long as we give them the fight immediately that, you know, it's given an active and we don't have to wait till we've done the council.
To do water restrictions and we vote on him being.
Right. I think that's a good way to go about it.
Uh, no, I will just have an amendment to the next period of the next meeting. I'll make sure JD looks that over his bowl and make sure he's got the mix and discretion.
So I've got something else. We don't have to really do it tonight, but it's something that I wanted you guys to think about. We've got some people in Southernville that are super high water user. And, you know, I've been trying to talk to a lot of people in Southernville. I've gone a few talks with them and and some people like that. And there's people that say, I don't care what the water costs, I'm going to use it no matter what. My wife wants a garden, I mean, give her a garden. So with our tiers, I don't know how many tiers we've got, but I think you need to look at raising the cost of the tiers for the people that have that kind of opinion that they're going to use water no matter what. I got the money to use it. You know, if they want that opinion, they need to pay.
Last year, last month. You guys are very different and have a lot of parties next time.
Yeah. I want to apologize for not coordinating that better and three separate medical issues to deal with and my grandmother died. So I didn't travel to help with these days. So otherwise I would have been done a better job of coordinating work sessions, but that is something I think we can really really commit to having before the next council meeting, if that's okay. I think that's something that we've got to.
I know we have lots of families that need lots of water, but there's lots of people that don't care.
Yeah.
Well, it's just going to show there's a lot of it that I can really watch our water for a long week. And it's not fair. I mean, my bill never is so. And not fair for me. And concerning that much and have other people just.
Is there a way, I know JD does a lot of paperwork in the residence, because I want, I want our water, where you believe there one. But I wonder if there's a way if you can. The way that we're calculating water now, is there a way we can define the high tier mark at what level? Because I would agree with you, like over two, five, there should probably be. Dropped it. That's the price for for for, but I mean, if we're willing, we can find, you know, how many in Soderville. We don't really know how many people are in each home, but take an average. And say it's 8,000 gallons, 9,000 gallons that we can determine. So that went out. The average monthly house use per Soderville is 3,700 gallons. And that's about where it's very low over that, but but. Okay, I'm looking at the top five each month, and they're almost what you're chugging in water with. Yeah, so there is a way that you can define.
Yeah.
The next one, I think, made a worth carry. You could sit down, Alex, is that what the actual tiers are? Because I don't know what they are. I know two ones, 2,500 gallons, 45 dollars. After that, I have no idea.
Yes.
That's what it is. Okay, I just want to make sure that there's a way to get. And then the parks and churches don't do much. This will use a considerable amount, but think, you know, maybe we go talk to them and ask them to see if they can get a grant, replace their old toilets.
Another thing that I think is kind of quirky is that our first tier is 2,500. Our next one is 5,000. That's another 2,500. The next tier is 5,000 rather than 2,500. So that's it makes more sense to keep them at 2,500 acres.
We've talked enough for a while.
Yeah, so we can.
So we raise the price on the highest tier, you can also give a chance to fill out for a discount because of having either with lower income and a large family. So that way you're not stressing about hitting those families that are already having a hard time. They have a choice to apply for snow, sand, lower rates.
Now we want to, for the people who are living a lot, that they climb with their payments, are we doing a good job on going out to the people? For the everybody who's pulling their water bills, are we going out and we're doing a good job and giving people who are behind their payments? Because there is a utility system. We broadcast that. It's on the line. But so you know, we need to make sure we're targeting persons and where we put in money.
We set up 12 payment letters today. So a few people came in to resolve that after that. Yeah, and there there are some people consistently only three months out from payment. So. Yeah, but they'll they'll get there eventually. Yeah. Yeah, everything. Yes.
I would like what the council would okay to go to Dun River, Mark Six through the tent for any management, political costs.
There is money in the budget.
You should go and get ones around because, you know, if you've been this and that, you're going to say this or that. They'll get down the best you can do that and that working.
Yeah, I said that working last time.
Yeah, no, there's absolutely budget for it. This will be a good one for. So we're going to open the contractor review board here for this one. So you're going to have to download and do your cheat sheet. So, yeah, so you can ask a couple more questions when we get to the PLC part, which is going to be next. Basically, it's going to be open as a contract review board here. So you can ask your questions under the mural.
As a last week, that was. I was curious. Yeah, I mean, Alex may have talked about, see, once we get the PLCs thing told, then there's some money available possibly to go ground it down through those streets.
Yeah.
And then we can have the county come to grade them once we have ground on. And if we get a decent driver that can do it as you're. Would you just have it come? Mostly the driveway, you're going to say can spread up two to four inches. And then, you know, what happens?
Well, that's. Rock, if you split the outside and the daylight off and go down both sides and almost that, yeah, certainly back end, yeah. Switch it all out.
I can give you some context to that. We have 75,000 art funds. I think we we talked about using some of the PLC and some of it for street grading. So the art, the PLC is a thing that needs to get done first. And I think what's going to be prudent for us is to just use whichever one gets recommended at the hearing and then I'll have to do some budget tweaks after that to see what ends up being left over and use that to from the labor plan. We have to spend it all by June 30th. So. That's that. All right, now you can gather in there. Uh, yeah, so it starts off with, so now you can present.
Started out at 50,000, Councilor Hensley got it down to 41,790.
Yeah, we we figured that. We fixed it.
Yeah, we got clarification.
Yes.
The other one, JIMCO, they are basically the same thing. Mine has the studio 5,000, the client software. So. And they're 25,000. If we go, which I don't know. If we go to Studio 5,000, the design software, that's going to be about 30,000. So, but 10,000 left, but in this one either way. Both there's a P that goes on top of that to protect and then to buy the software and then you got to. You know, the newer, but you don't have to maintain like, yeah, you know, maintain like. But you don't have to buy the software. Once you buy some. You know, my thought on that was, you know, if you're going to get the software, you might as well get a new computer along with it, you know, capable of running faster than a 14K. But Councilor Hensley handled like he's worked with council and this helped out with my business. So my my personal recommendation is the lower bid.
No, I agree. I, you know, I mean.
JD did a good job because at first it was pretty vague as to what they were doing and it seems like, you know, I mean, seems like they're going to be a lot easier to work with, not not as rigid as as what Rockwell would have been.
Right, and they're out of letting it. So any problems we have, they're right there.
I think they'll be a good partner going forward to to help support it as well. So that's that's my thoughts.
So this is the one that we also need a computer too. So it'd be the 25K, the 10 for the software and a computer.
It's about 4,500 to 5,000 for the software. And, you know, what, 1,200 for a computer if that, that's that's not high. So it'd still be less than 35K, about 31, 32. Software's not necessary. You know, the main thing with it is, is that, you know, once you get the program or something like that and you get a small little glitch in the program, you have a way to go back in there and kind of reference it. Gives you kind of eyeballs into the into the program. It also gives you the opportunity to back that software up onsite. So what would that? We do have that, but Stan corrupted the file and screwed it up. So.
We had it.
We had it at one time.
Because I got copies in order to.
Yeah, you got it from Jeff. So I mean, my recommendation is that we do carry the software because, I mean, you can, Jimko can come in, write the program and leave you a thumb drive, but you can't see what's on it unless you have the software. So.
And to ask us to the question, these new workers are new meters. No problem.
Yeah. It controls the pumps.
See, that controls the wells basically on the residence.
And it gives JD an interface to be able to go and set times and schedules and stuff like that.
Can you remote that?
I can be from the computer. Possibly. But I don't know that they need that. I'd rather have a remote out of the meters, but.
And and since they're talking about, you know, security and domestic terrorism on waters and power plants and whatever, is there anything within these systems that go, hey, something's going on? Any kind of alerting?
Um, there's capabilities of that. Yeah, I mean, you know, with this PLC upgrade, I mean, you could put flow meters on there. So if something takes off, you can detect flow rates, right? Because you got an analog card that, you know, will take that signal coming back. So you can set those up, you know, depending on the hardware. Then you put it in the system to monitor these. And, you know, there's there's more to it, like an OPC software, which is a third-party software that we're integrating with this, that if something like that happened, they could send out a text to any one of us saying that we got a problem at the well, right? So somebody needs to go to look at it. So you know, those are some of the things that with this migration, you know, and coming into the 20th century, 21st century, that, you know, we're able to monitor our systems much better.
Interesting. It's a push of some sort.
Yeah, but like I say, I mean, to get to that point, you'd have to have, you know, some type of a, you know, electronic flow meter that's going back. And I, there are a couple of them up there already. They're not forcing very well, but.
The other thing on the Jimco bid or proposal, they put option one and option two. So we do not want option two. So when I, when I accept their offer, it's going to be for option one, not option.
Well, I was just going to quiz, is that the same price of that or?
All right, they are the same price.
And option two is basically an obsolete type of.
It's not as obsolete as what we have next.
No. But it is. It will be migrated out.
So just to add from a budget perspective, the the North Coast is 40,000, right? And then. Oh, we have 75,000 in ARP funds that we have to spend. So spending more money right now.
Is a good idea.
Yeah. So if I just want to make sure we're. Yeah, if 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 it comes down to cost, we can spend more money. It's fine. Uh because the less money we spend, the more we have to figure out what to use it for. I just want to make sure we have a a a conscious awareness.
Off this subject. The I would like to get with council sometime and discuss the public private road jump.
Please.
So that's something that we need to discuss and figure out how we wanna possibly change that if we can.
You mean the biggest potholes up there?
Starts out St. Louis and Ridge and Ridgeview and then Ridge Place and. We tried one time trying to change that all one name because the fire department comes out here and they run around searching to find out where the roads are at. Unfortunately, each one of those road de- designations has a mailbox on it. Your post office will have to change the names of the roads. Just gotta stay the way it is.
So that's another, yeah, another number of time.
If they could not figure out how to get that, we get it under a public road instead of a family, I really own public access. That'd be great.
But I mean, I don't want to go cheap just to go cheap on the software, but if if this is comparable and you think it's good, you guys are the experts. Then I like the idea of having extra money to do something else good, like streets.
Yeah, yeah. I think overall it's probably gonna be thirty three, thirty three thousand to get the software and get a computer. You know, I get things.
And you know, there might be some cost that pop up that we don't receive.
It'll be minor after that. So but yeah, I mean, after reviewing it, talking a little with JD and the vendors, it definitely seems like optional ones to leave the some north coast is pretty much the same.
Yep. It's pretty much happening now. Well, with that forty one, is that software?
Uh let's move on with the the script, I think that'll allow us to. So that's what we've been doing, basically.
Okay, question, public comment on the contract. How old is the old system?
Just about. Yeah, they might be a little bit without a whole lot.
Five oh three processor, yeah, came up and thank you, ninety four, I believe. What I suggest if you're gonna buy a computer, spend a little bit extra on it. You get a really good one because then it's less time between having to get. Right, I agree. You want a solid state hard drive. You don't want a mechanical hard drive.
Like, let's say, say thirty thousand. When you get better, I'll go up to like thirty five thousand. And if you don't spend it, does that that transfer right back into?
Let's say the road fund project.
So uh there there will have to be a few budget tweaks we do during the rest of the year for that. That is something I'll be able to figure out, but not right now. So yeah, we're 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 gonna be good with this, whatever decision the council makes.
Is there any additional counsel or staff discussion?
Which one will be the specific?
I make a second, we accept the proposal, proposal option one.
That's your first second as a counselor, so. Pretty soon you'll be the one moving. There we go. All right. Oh, yeah. So the next one on the agenda is going to be. Sorry. So that's item ten A. The the RFP is item eleven D. So next up is ten A reorganization.
No, so reorganization.
Yeah, so we have to vote on everything again. So we have to do a few things. We have to elect the council president because uh that's elected every two years. Uh we have to elect a sergeant at arms. Uh there isn't a specific term yet, but this is reorganization. So you'd really want to be doing that anyway. Uh we need to have the mayor appointed official assistants in the mayor. That is just the procure the title for the procurement officer in our procurement ordinance that's up in the mayor has to um appoint. That's not subject to council confirmation. Uh but we like to do it during a public meeting so everybody knows who we choose this unless he wants to be the procurement officer. Um there we go. See. Um we need to appoint a board of director member for the Cascade West Council of Governments and an alternate. Uh my recommendation for that would be have me be the alternate. Supposed to be a forum for elected officials, but you want to fall back and I'm the guy ends up working with the most after the designate. So uh that'll be that. But that'll be up to you. Um Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Partnership. Um I kind of automatically was that because they just kind of need one person from each one to do it, but we want to make sure that the mayor is appointing somebody who is the designate to that. It has one meeting every year. Um it's like fifteen minutes long, but still the mayor points people and the council confirms. East Lynn Utilities Corporation Council, um our public works director is the designated for that one. Uh he's also the vice president. So um I it'd be kind of rude to take him out of that one. But again, the mayor makes appointments and the council confirms. So uh League of Oregon Cities, uh small cities meeting. So that's not one we vote on. Um the idea is that um every few months, there's a meeting of the small cities in the region. Um councillor Oliveris has been coming with me to those. Uh so we want to make sure the council just kind of has consensus about who they want going with me uh to those. Um we need to vote on checking account signers. We'll have to vote officially to remove councillor Mayor Tis Jackman and uh see if we want to take off councillor Oliveris or keep her on. And then we need to add the mayor, of course. We also need to do that state pool account. And that's uh those are the main things. We have a little bit of a discussion on some kind of council rules for who leaves with staff about certain things. So the points away, Mr. Mayor. Who we like to nominate for council president. Anybody can make a nomination. The um the nominee just has to accept the nomination. Well, he just has to accept it. Yep. So we just need to count the A's and E's. Congratulations, council president, Terry. Uh same with the sergeant at arms. Anyone can make the nomination. The nominee just has to accept it. Um so Robert's rules looks at the sergeant at arms as a uh a kind of a a backup. Uh somebody who helps the presiding officer maintain order um and can kind of back end you're not um at arms. You're not really. But the idea is to have them be somebody on the council who's willing to help the presiding officer maintain order. Anybody who's nominated can accept or reject. If the nomination is rejected, then there's nothing that anybody else could do. Next one is the appointment of the assistant to the mayor. Uh for I was the assistant to Mayor Perry. Again, this is the procurement officer. There's nothing special. There's nothing. I don't get additional money for it. It's just part of my job description. Um so Mayor Lewis can just say, Alex, you're the procurement officer, or you can say JD is, or you could say anybody else is. And I just have to say yes. So who would you like to be assistant to the mayor? Okay. Um so the next one uh is the council of government's board of directors member in the alternate. So currently that is councillor Oliveris. Um I think personally, this would be a good one for her to keep doing because she's been doing it. And I think that'll be a good one for her to do. She's also been doing a ton of stuff. So of all the of all the roles where she's been doing, and I think she could continue, I personally think this would be the best one for her. She's been really good helping me kind of transition to the mayor. So yeah, I'd appreciate it also. Yeah. So the mayor has to appoint. So yeah, and then you have to officially point the alternate. So I think I would be good as an alternate uh because I also spend a lot. I I work with Ryan and their staff a lot just on the services they offer. I go to the manager league. That's why I think I would be good as an alternate, but the mayor has discretion to appoint any city official he wants. He can appoint JD, he can appoint Roger, he can appoint anybody. So. No, sorry. So this is, oh, yeah, that's the next item. So good. Okay. Okay, uh so there needs to be um a motion to confirm the college nominations for a D and E. The next one again was the Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Partnership. Anybody wants to go to a fifteen minute meeting every year? Feel free. Um I did it this year, so I think I'm probably best positioned to do it again. So. All right. Leave a motion to approve the confirmation. Next one is E L U C C. This is JD's one time every month where he gets to meet with his. There we go, quarterly. Yeah, so the mayor will have to appoint JD again, unless, of course, the mayor wants to appoint somebody else, but please. And that was your first motion. So hey, you're making up. Okay, uh. Next up. Uh League of Oregon Cities. So again, this is not one we have to appoint or confirm. It's just who wants to be the one who goes. All right, there we go. All right. So next up is checking account center. So we need to officially vote to remove councillor America's Jackman. Um I know councillor Oliveris had talked about wanting to no longer be a check signer. Yeah, so there is gonna be a motion to remove councillor Mary. It says Jackman. And the next one is to add Mayor Lewis to the account. And if we want to add another councillor to it, we can do that. It's all up to you if anybody wants to volunteer or if the council is that so. Yeah, so there's also ways to say that I'm not restricting it. You can make the choice. I think we're good with three, but I want to make sure. All right, the next one is the LDIP account. Same thing. Right now the mayor is on that along with the city recorded. So we need to officially remove uh council president Perry and officially uh in a separate motion, uh votes add Mayor Lewis to the state pool.
So I make the motion that we remove uh Roger Perry from the LDIP. And add Brian Lewis to the LDIP.
All right. Um so next up, um councillor relevant. We want to talk about some kind of council role adjustment. And yeah, I'll answer that. You know, I you've worn several hats in the past year. And as much as I'd love to have you there, I do not want you to burn out at all. So I'm glad you're taking a reduced role this year and things are being spread out. That's gonna keep it healthy for everybody. So thank you so much. Well, that's the end of that item. Uh Mr. Mayor, the next item was item ten B. We already covered that. That was the city audit. So your discretion, we can open up uh item ten C, which is resolution twenty three oh one ending water restrictions. We already talked about that earlier. We have water again. So you just need to have somebody uh move to adopt the resolution and then. In the verify, we are going to be changing that ordinance in the future. In the very fine, we are going to be changing that ordinance in the future, so we have more discretion for our public works director to take. Right, uh, Mr. Mayor, the next item is ten D initiating a zoning amendment. This is one of those rigmarole things. Anytime we want to amend the city zoning ordinance, the council has to move, has to have a vote to initiate it. Then the next meeting, we can preview it and it's it's kind of annoying, but that's the process in the ordinance. Uh, our ordinance currently says we have to put um uh public notices in the Lebanon Express. They just announced that they're closing, so guess what? We need to put it in a newspaper. Yeah, there you go. See, so um the council has to vote to initiate amendments to ordinance nineteen oh two, changing the newspaper record. I didn't put a specific newspaper record in there. Uh, that just gives us flexibility to research. I did look into the two alternatives. Albany Democrat Herald is a daily. The other one that uh the city of Lebanon is using is a monthly. They get one issue per month and it comes out. In a way that will not ever appropriately give the rest to anybody about our meetings. So. My recommendation will probably be the Albany Democrat Herald unless there's something. We can look at that. Uh, what I would be doing is calling the papers and asking them about their circulation and so the votes also give a balanced uh view of where things are. Um, so. Plus, they're they're the one thing which they own the Lebanon Express, so I really work with all of their staff and people, anyway. Right. Liberty needs to make the motions. Oh, next step. So there was an additional resolution that I passed out for the council meeting. That is um. Resolution twenty-three oh two, um that is our L G I P. Yep, so that is something that I uh should have added to this agenda. Um, right now we have about ninety-five thousand dollars in our checking account, seventy-five thousand of which is um. Uh, our money after this round of checks, uh those that's. That's twelve thousand dollars we're spending today. Um, that'll uh leave us with eight thousand plus the ARPA, so I figured we should move the money over. Uh, now so that we have more than a cushion of eight thousand dollars just. Um, otherwise we'd have to wait another month and I don't want there to be an emergency requiring something weird. Um, to clarify, this is money that we budgeted to have come in. Uh, all this does is move it into the checking account so we can use it. I'm not pulling additional funds beyond what we budgeted for the year, so. This is money we're supposed to have. I just need to move it over. So that's the gist of this resolution. Yeah, my goal is to do it regularly throughout the year. Oh, next up. Hey, the gift that keeps on giving total maximum daily load. Oh, I've had it up to here with the Department of Environmental Quality. Every city in Oregon, my goodness. We reviewed a draft ordinance review at the last meeting. The price of price is actually model code we're supposed to use, so we're chunking that. And reviewing this one, I sent that one to our legal counsel. That is something that is required to do for um approving an amendment. So our legal counsel got it and said, okay, I'll get it to you by the end of the day. And then they said, oh, wait a second, I can't do that. In a day, uh, she needed to talk to somebody with public works experience to talk to your public worster. What did she tell you?
Yeah, it doesn't apply to this for a lot of things. What really irritates me is they try to push it down to the. Population to the individuals, to the homeowners, to manage their own environmental control. And the way I see it, you know, we each pay a lot of money in taxes. A lot of money goes for environmental control as it is. And for them to try to push it down as an ordinance for the city to pass to make the citizens manage their own property. Um, without a lot of, excuse me, without a lot of assistance um from them, either financial assistance or. Educational assistance is not fair, and it's not fair for the city to try to pass an ordinance that a lot of people don't understand. So. My view is that, you know, I know we're trying to follow other people's mandates just because, you know, they didn't understand it either and they just passed the bill. And. You know, I just, to me. I don't know if there's a deadline on this, but we need a lot more clarification on what they're trying to do. You know, to our city to make people, they're trying to make us Portland and we're not. Well, they're trying to make people put culverts in their, you know, in their own properties and tanks and I mean sediment, you know. Landfills and stuff like that. I mean, it's just ridiculous. To try to, you know, mandate that this is what the populace has got to do. So. Unless they come up with a different plan on how to manage this, or they're willing to spend those billions of dollars that they get each and every year on the federal level. Try to help cities and communities deal with this crisis, they shouldn't force us to pass things that that just doesn't make sense. And that I got off my soapbox and this, but that's.
What's the consequences of not doing?
There's a fine. At the top of my head, it might be like five hundred dollars, something like that.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense. I mean, it does not. Like I said, if you read through it a little bit, what they're trying to do, it's it's ridiculous.
It's also very frustrating that this one person, the gatekeeper, has such a reputation that everybody says she's difficult to deal with and can't get any answers. And I took first record, everybody has a boss. So is there anyone that we can go to over her? Or when some people maybe go to Salem next week, will they have the opportunity to? You're right, to get a friend of someone and say. We're we're struggling, we have issues.
They have to do it too.
Talk to the county commissioner about it and see if he can figure out some assistance.
That's the problem. The environmental people have so much control over what goes on, but like I say, they're trying to push it to your level, my level. And everybody in this room's level to try to do it for them. And it it it's just not fair to any homeowner out there that's got to try to figure out. You know, how am I going to manage my stormwater whenever you live on a mountain and water trickles downhill?
Yeah, and I understand it right now. It wouldn't apply to you, but if your house burned down, you rebuilt, then you have to go through it all.
Exactly, you know, and they're talking about trying to put in like, you know, sand filled. Property to help filter out whatever leeches from pine way up upstream or whatever, you know, their fertilizer or whatever they're using up there, right? It's just to me, it is ridiculous and and for us to try to pass this this bill. Um, and and try to enforce it. Um, and they have penalties in there. To enforce it, and if you don't do what they say as a personal level, you're going to be fined and it's it's just not right. So that's my record, Jeff Hensley.
Well, yeah, so. I had an idea about how to draw more attention to how ridiculous this whole thing is. And it uh came from learning about uh a provision in state law that allows the mayor to appoint a special police force. And the special police appointed by a mayor are only allowed to deal with water quality offenses. So the idea would be like, hey, you know how much we're complying? We appointed a police force just to do that. Now, that was that was an idea to draw attention to it. Um, I don't think that means we're going to start buying guns and stuff. There was, there's also some, uh, definitely some room for confusion to that part. I asked the I S first off. Uh, would it have any effect on our insurance if we um appoint a special police force that deals with defenses against water purity? And they said, you're gonna like. Shoot people for running sprinklers in the summer? I said, no, 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 that's not what it's about. State law is very, very specific about what a special police force can do. If we found somebody like proactively dumping a bucket of mercury into the well, then we could act. Is anybody going to do that? Probably not. But I thought it would be an interesting way to go about drawing attention to just how ridiculous this is. This is our ridiculous response. We appointed a special police force.
I don't think it's a good idea, especially, I mean, most, most lawsuits have to do, I mean, that there's a high incidence of law related and legal. I just.
Yeah, that's okay.
I mean, C I S said at this point, they're not covering.
Well, they said both yes and no. They were really unclear about it and I would have to ask for more clarification. They can. Say the mayor's appointment of a special police force is actually not subject to council approval, but the financial costs would be. For example, special police can only act under law if they wear a badge that say Sootaville Special Police. Uh, the council could say, we're not going to buy your badges, and if I don't want to buy a badge, then I can't do anything. Uh, I can't ever be on duty as a special police officer, even if that's added to my portfolio.
So what are other cities doing?
Brownsville is trying to get all the cities organized to hire their own lobbyists, basically in the area to basically start lobbying against things like this. Um, they had a an article in the 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 Herald the other day about what all the what Brownsville is trying to do. Um, because they're in the same boat with us. This doesn't apply to them. It's not, it's not relevant. So, um. You know, there's, there's not a whole lot of pushback. A lot of the larger cities can afford to just like pay a consultant to do it and then never think about it again. Uh, we can't do that. So another thing, if we're going to kind of thread on to what councillor Hensley was talking about, the council could just vote to not comply and see what they do.
I donated dollars. And we got five hundred people to donate one dollar and pay the price.
In pennies and we'll send it to D E Q.
Proceed to giving my hundred dollars in there to pay our taxes in pennies to the account. The guy said, I would accept this. She called the state police. See, please come in and says, you don't accept this money. You don't have to pay taxes, you know.
Mr. Mayor, may may I ask you a question for clarification? When you're talking the D E Q and this, this that you're talking about, are you talking about? For instance. The three tier city where the water comes down and it gathers in my yard. Cause I live on the bottom tier. Is that what you're talking about?
That's part of it.
That's okay, because what my husband did is started a hedge fence line. And built a ditch all the way down and put a pond in. And put a big piece of PVC, and so he's saving the city's butt. And he's saving the county's butt where they don't have to come and dig that out every year.
Well, it depends what's going out of your palm though, right?
Just water from up here.
I know, but if it's contaminated, what you're going to be responsible. Not, that's what this is about.
See, that's, that's what I, that's.
Gentlemen all there that put all that gravel up on this property, you know, that's that's encompassed in this in this ordinance.
And all the dirt that you put on yours that came right down.
I'm just saying.
I I understand. I'm seeking clarification.
Fish in the thing. There are no fish.
Honestly, we're trying to seek clarification from the D Q on what they.
And they're not wanting.
And they're not wanting to clarify.
They don't know what they, they don't want to want to ask you for this one again.
Yeah, the emails I've gotten boggle my mind.
But it's a lot different in a rural area than it is in a city community. A lot of these ordinances are set up for like paved roads, asphalt, concrete.
Where they could just pass the buck.
Well, I mean, where they've got, you know, drainage system, that's that's control that goes to some kind of a sanitation system to filter it all out. And they're trying to force that into the rural areas. And we're not capable of doing that. And now they're trying to drill it all the way down to the individual. And that's what really irritates the hell out of me. Yep, exactly. And we fire us to put some kind of a yes sanitation system. So anyways, that's my thought, I think.
Do we want to just say we don't want to comply? Cause we could just do that too.
But it depends on what the the repercussions of it are. We don't even know what that's going to be and we don't want to say something that we don't understand what the repercussions of it's going to be. Right? So I think we need to just kick the can down the road a little longer until we can figure out what that's.
Yeah, the city is, the city's next T M Z L report is due at the end of the month, so. Basically, I have to write yet another one of those things they're going to ask.
Uh, someone to be at the next council meeting to explain this.
I think that's what I can do. I'll be like, hey, come to the council meeting.
We don't understand it. I can't pass that. We're not properly comprehending. So can you please send a representative from here to from your agency? Down here to explain your accounts for what you're supposed to. And I think that's kind of what JD's saying as the person that's doing it. It's like anything, right? They give you kind of loose leaf. Let you just kind of go, you interpret it as will and we'll just crush you with fines and whatnot.
Exactly.
We'll just comply instead of, I mean, kind of happened with the second amendment thing that happened in Oregon. We're going to pass a law. Don't care how you fix it, but here it is. And there's no infrastructure to take care of it. There's, there's multiple other ones that. But a lot of it happens with the environment. We just need to save it. We need to take care of it. We don't. Matter how you get there. We just need it done. And then people will comply.
And that's where they're at right now with us, and I just don't agree with it. So. You know, I don't want to continue putting work on Alex, but we need to understand what happens if we do not.
I think that's a good idea to invite him. It shows that we're trying to work with him. Also, maybe put your money where you're about it.
Let me see if I can find the reference to Brownsville.
Are going to sit here and say, okay, I can fly. That's why we come here. Is to give our opinion.
Oh, that's, that was my thought.
Cause I mean, if you look at, well, we were doing the right thing.
Trying to get somebody here at our next council meeting to explain a little bit further. And then if we can't get somebody to come here and and try to work with us on it, I I agree with Alex and just to say, we're not going to this period.
Make them show why.
They need to fund it. It's not up to you and I, Brian, and anybody at this table or in this room to fund it. It's ridiculous how many hours it doesn't stand. Exactly. It's crazy. It's just, just to comply with somebody who's being kind of intolerant. I won't say that on.
Okay, well, that'll be my next move. Go, hey, before we comply, we need to have the E Q come to present and explain the council. And uh, yeah, then we kicked the ball to them. Cool. Okay, that'll be what we do next.
Sorry, Alex, but that's.
I can't wait to do this.
Still servants really should avoid value statements. The elected officials are the ones who should be talking about. Kind of feelings and opinions and like that, but you said everything I was thinking, so. I'm going to violate the ethical standard just for this month because it kind of needs to happen. Oh, me too. Like I have to write ordinances to protect fictitious fish. No, there are better things to do. We could be filling in puddles. Yeah, right? You could at least give us some fish, right? Mr. Mayor, the next item is eleven B. So this is a proposed amendments R F P twenty twenty two dash two. So this was the R F P we passed a few months ago to try and get an engineer to figure out what to do with converting councillor Mary's check as well. Um, nobody wanted to bid on it in the time that we had. Uh, holidays, yeah. So rather than putting a, a deadline on when submissions can happen, I wanted to have the council amend it so that submissions can be received at any point in time. Um, I did let Business Oregon know we are having trouble like this, and they just said, keep us updated, let us know. It's one of those things, like, they really need to kind of use it or lose it. So, but they, they just wanna make sure we're keeping them up to date. So the, the amendments will be, the proposal may be received at any time, and then the council review bidders at the next regular council meeting following submissions, as long as a proposal is submitted by twelfth P M, the week before a regular council meeting. Um, that would be seven days, you know, Thursday. Um, and the council will vote on awarding a contract at the meeting where bidding firms are interviewed. Um, and the other thing that I found talking to potential people is that a lot of engineering firms right now don't really wanna do piecemeal projects. They wanna be our engineer of record and do all of our stuff. Um, so it could be that if we don't get anybody to bid on this, come whenever you want project, we might just have to put in an R F P for engineer of record, so somebody.
Would you have to give them a retainer?
No, um, they would just be anytime there's, there's an engineering thing. Um, but I actually talked to one of them about this, and they said, um, when you get a company like that, they do often do a little bit of cost creep. It's kind of that, they wanna make money, so. Yeah.
They send the only dog in town.
Yeah. So it's kind of like, we have a lawyer, we have one lawyer, we don't put out an R F P every time I need to review an ordinance, which, which makes sense. But I wanna get to know a firm and the quality of their work before giving them, you know, a five-year contracts to do every, all of our stuff. So.
Alex, so what exactly needs to be done on this? I mean, I do know an engineer over in Flemish. And, you know, I mean, if I had a, a description, I could talk to John and, and figure out if, maybe it's something he might be interested in, you know, working with you on J D on, you know, cause I don't know exactly what it is, but.
Gotcha.
What you're, what you're asking for the engineer to do, and he will do probably a little bit of piecemeal. I mean, he wouldn't be, you know, committed if, if he has the time. He's a small group, but.
Okay.
I can talk to John and see, see what he has to say.
So the well we wanna convert, um, there, um, an engineer needs to look at everything that needs to be done to convert it and then figure out how to connect it to the water system, whether or not we do need a reservoir. I think right now the plan is to lean towards getting a reservoir. Um, that, that's something we'll, we'll discuss during the engineering, but we want a reservoir, right? Kind of, no, currently, we keep going back, okay? Okay, just wanna make sure. Um, so, yeah, that is something an engineer would cover. How do we convert this well? And then how do we get it connected to the city water system? There you go.
That written, obviously.
Yeah, there's documentation from, from Business Oregon that I would send them for what they're looking for. Um, and I would work with that engineer to make sure they get in front of Business Oregon to know what does Business Oregon want? Business Oregon wants to give us five hundred thousand dollars, but they want us to give them a plan first. So once an engineer looks at it, guess, here's what it would, here's what it would take, then we send it to Business Oregon.
I'll swing by and talk to John, you know, either tomorrow or early next week and see if he'd be willing to give you money to call and.
Okay.
See if you can maybe progress from there.
Sounds good. Yeah, all we're gonna do is approve the, uh, the amendment to, um, the R F P, and then we can officially allow him to call in, cause the official deadline was four days ago, so.
I do have some information I'd like to share from today's cog meeting, the short version of O W C C N G. Um, that actually saw in our next graph, but potentially could, is going to definitely have an impact on the citizens of our county counties that we change to the SNAP. Um, and it's hugely trendy. I don't know if anybody knows about this, but apparently with the omnibus bill came through, the federal government, it's not Oregon, but the federal government has said, no, no more extra payments with SNAP. So there are some people now with SNAP that maybe a family of four get fifty dollars normally. Um, with the extra funding to be getting the emergency, they've been getting six hundred. Now they're just going down to fifty within like a month or two. It's gonna be devastating. It's devastating to the people. It's devastating to some of the like food pantries. It also, there's a concern of the trickle down. Was it going to businesses that aren't going to get money from people for food? So is it gonna impact businesses for closing? So that's just, it's gonna impact twenty eight thousand people within, so it's rather huge that's coming. Um, that's going to go into effect. It's February is when they started, and we're going to the people, money in March. They have money still on their SNAP card. That won't go away, but they will go from potentially six hundred dollars a month to. Way back down. It was part of the emergency.
So it's only money three year and a half.
Everybody straight away through like two and a half. And also related, but not related, is Medicaid, which talks about how there's infrastructures that they make new laws for that make no sense. So Medicaid is going to be changing as well. Um, they're going to unlink it from, uh, the pandemic. And so the people who can be getting Medicare is going to dramatically increase to. And it's, um, they will, it has to be completed in fourteen months. Um, they have all first plans on how they're gonna work with people to let them know ahead of time to see what else is up there. But that's also a huge impact. Which, since one of the votes just came through for a lot of, uh, universal healthcare. Oh, that's gonna happen. I don't know. It's, there's not gonna be the Oregon health plan. It's gonna be, I mean, so is this, but giving the people the Medicaid that they need. So those are some really huge things that are gonna impact. Today's meeting, we talked about some flyers, some links to videos to help people understand this, cause it's gonna be a dramatic hit to their budget for SNAP and Medicaid. Yes, it's, it's just going down. So as soon as we get that, I'd like us to maybe have a link on our website and put flyers up to let people know about. I mean, they're starting it, um, and it's fourteen months, but I think they're starting in January, February and March. It's like sixty days to review it and ninety days to talk about it, but within fourteen months, it's gonna be done.
Affect the, uh, the, sorry, my brain just went down on me for a second. That's going to affect the, um, addict community a lot. So I have almost four and a half, almost five years playing sober, and I work with them a lot, and I know that it's gonna, that's why I ask, cause I gotta prepare myself to.
Yeah, yeah. Yes.
Is there any suggestions on what they feel like personally to do?
They, they're, they're bulking up their staffs to be able to help. They're doing actual manual calls to restaurants, to grocery stores. If there's anybody that we think they need to call, they're trying to really, I think, working with Shiva, talking about it to somebody who can be that coverage of not quite old enough to get Medicare, but you know, are there any kind of veteran services for the Medicaid part of it? But they're trying to be very proactive, but they realize it's just gonna just take a lot of.
And then with the eight point seven percent raise, we just got for social security. That's already in our Medicare payments up to a hundred and sixty fifty a month.
It went down. It were a hundred and seventy, it went.
Five, hundred and seventy-five down to a hundred and sixty-four. But still, some peoples went up.
Well, it goes up at least on your, um, tax income, the Irma, I think it's called.
Yes.
But anyway, those, I think we just need to really make sure that that message gets out, and that's huge. And, and they're saying, well, you have people that are worried about their budget to take six hundred dollars out of your budget in a month, especially for food, which is expensive anyway. You can't go to the store without spending a hundred dollars.
That's for one day, yeah.
I want us to have that information for, for, to let people know it's not Oregon, it's doing, it's the federal government, yes.
If I can add one little spark of hope to this, we'll talk about our, um, the Oregon Mayor's Association proposal. We need to talk about that too, actually. Do you wanna get involved? Cause we wrote a check for you to be in the Oregon Mayor's Association.
I am on Brian's timber.
I've already gone.
Okay.
Yep. So if the check's ready, if you wanna do it.
You'll do it again.
Great, let's do it, okay. Um, the, uh, the proposal they had, we, we signed on to supporting was, uh, give every city at least fifty thousand dollars, and then, you know, more so based on its population. Our plan that we talked about, and then I've submitted, um, testimony to the legislature for, is that basically we'd wanna be using it to help with, um, assistance to people in the area. Um, so like kind of a canned good food bank kind of thing, added to my portfolio, uh, with additional time here funded by, uh, the allocation would be, I would be spending more time trying to get something built up and operation that we can help with that kind of assistance. So we, uh, we already planned, there's, there's one, one place we can go. We just make sure we, we have to make sure the legislature passes it. So maybe one, one bright spot possibly for sort of assistance.
We didn't say that on the meeting, that people would keep their benefits until it was completely resolved. So when they do the sixty days, if you're talking about ninety, they keep their benefits.
Didn't you don't like my color coding?
No, I'm doing something. I heard that, that's why I covered.
Wow. This council had a problem.
No.
Well, nobody doubts any of this.
If I were gonna tie it down, it's just gonna have to be three days off. And those pipes. Yeah, I probably.
Yes, uh, is, did it show up?
I didn't see it today.
It's a huge tape, um, that, cause we didn't wanna impede on the city water system, um, doing the destruction side. But is there any ordinance or anything that says we can't leave up there for the family, the pool of water, that we'll be able to use? I think it has to be buried. I think we were leaving it up on, on the ground.
Many homes that have to have wells, outroads, and sports, and they have like no.
That is sister things, yes.
The county tied in.
No drought, someplace.
He's right, there's doing. And now, right?
I'm not the most, I mean, I have jobs.